I need to talk to you.[856.40][856.40](Laughter) Don't let him use sign language on you, Steve.
Okay, good morning. It is 8:30 and I am going to call our meeting to order. Are there any additions to the agenda? Mr. Hogan?
With you, Mr. Chair, we're asking councilors and delegates to add two closed session items. One would be third-party business interests and one would be intergovernmental relations.
So we're adding two additional ones. Third-party business and intergovernmental affairs. So that'll be 11-4 and 11-5. Any other additions to the agenda? Counselor Christie?
If not, I'll move the agenda as amended.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. The regular council meeting minutes from the March 25th meeting were pre-circulated. Are there any corrections or adjustments that need to be made? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve as presented. Deputy Reeve McGee?
I move to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Okay.
March 25th.
So we have a motion to adopt the minutes from the March 25th regular council meeting as presented. All those in favor? And that is also carried unanimously. So we are going to jump around a little bit in our agenda and what we are going to do is we're going to do a closed session on 11.1, which would be Advice from Officials, FOIP Section 24. And so I would entertain a motion to... Actually, we'll probably do FOIP Section 24 and then we'll also do third-party business, FOIP Section 16 at this point in time. So if I had a motion to entertain that. And I think one of those items probably is for you guys, right? Yes, okay. So motion to go into close? Counselor Christie?
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously.
Okay, it's 10:00 AM and I'm going to call our meeting back to order. The next item on our agenda is a delegation from the Hesketh Community Hall. So we'll welcome you here. And what I'm going to ask is I'll ask councils and administration in the room to introduce ourselves. And then if you want to introduce yourself, Mr. Cooper, and your group, and then we'll go on with your presentation. So Councilor Cunningham, if you would, please.
Good morning. Laura Lee Michelle Cunningham, Division Five, so my area kind of surrounds Three Hills area. And thank you all for coming today. Appreciate it.
Morning, everyone. Jerry Whitstock. I am Acme Linden area, and thanks for coming. Look forward to the presentation.
Good morning. Debbie Penna, Division Two.
And good morning. I'm Ken King, and I represent basically the northeast portion, so Toshu, Huxley, Buffalo Dome area.
Hi, I'm Councilor Fay McGee, and I represent the area encompassing Hesketh and Round.
Morning. I'm Wade Christie. I'm Division Six of the Northwest, and welcome.
Mr. Hogan.
Morning. Mike Hogan, Chief Administrative Officer.
Good morning. Carolyn Vanderkoel, Legislative Services Manager.
Good morning. Kevin Gannon, Director of Community Services.
Hi, good morning, everyone. I'm Mike Zier, the Director of Infrastructure.
One more.
Good morning. Teresa Clockard, Director of Corporate Services.
Okay, thank you. So, welcome. And like I say, Mr. Cooper, if you would just introduce yourself and your supporting group, and then go on with your presentation.
My name's Harold Cooper. I'm the father of our M.L.A. Nathan Cooper. Whenever I travel with Nathan, I sometimes do driving meetings such as this. He'll get, I'll get introduced. This is my dad, Harold Cooper. He and his mother, my mother, he and my, yeah, dad and mom, live with us. Nathan's quite clear that we don't know, that he doesn't live with us, but rather we live with him. So I've been a resident now for about two years in Hesketh, Nathan for almost five, when he discovered this incredible hamlet that is pretty much off the map, and it's disconnected from cell service. So we do have a few of the folks from town. I think all in, there's about six different residences, and even with our small numbers, there's a host of things that really happen. So on behalf of the town, or the, on behalf of the community at least, we're happy to be here and to be able to present our request to you. So our hall will celebrate 100 years in December. And if we can go down, can we go up one set of slides? So actually, you can see the construction of the hall. In 1925, started in December, and our first event was hosted just between Christmas and New Year's. So they built that building up in a hurry, pretty much because it might have been cold and they needed to get it done, and they wanted to have a place where families and a host of activities could take place. I included some in the document that we sent to you, activities for the local residents and surrounding communities, a social center for 4H, community potlucks, Farmers Union of Alberta met there, Women's Institute meetings, the schools, Christmas concerts were annually hosted in the hall. It was a hub of activities, including church services, Alberta Wheat Pool, regional events throughout the years. Social events were all about bringing families and the community together in meals, dances, bingos, et cetera. It served for many years as a polling station for the county, and the province, and federal elections. There's a huge amount of history wrapped up in that old building, not unlike lots of other very small communities in rural Alberta. Economics, transportation, size of farms, and all those things, ability for families to stay on the farm became harder and harder. So fewer numbers were available to help support the work. In that, those historic pictures, you'll also see on the wall, our efforts to keep our history alive, to let people know what's going on and what has gone on over the years. When I was thinking about the presentation, I thought about the idea and concept of if these walls could talk, just the same way as the walls in this hall, but these are a lot newer. Our hall was built shortly after the First World War. Veterans came home after the Second World War. And we've weathered a lot of storms. We actually have the pictures of when Nihill Creek had its dramatic flood in the late '40s, washed out our railroad, washed out the bridge. And there are a number of our farmers down in the Hesketh Valley that are quite happy that the big bridge is in, so that saved them lots of travel time around. Historically, though, that old bridge was pretty, pretty. But it's like with lots of progress, things have to be changing. And so that's where we're at today. Like I've mentioned, we already have chairs that are still there from the olden days back in the 1920s. And so our hope is to actually bring some modernization to the hall. We can go back to the first page again. Thanks. So in 20, in 19, in 2016, the hall through a grant from the county was completely recited and that's made a huge enhancement. In 2018, we had water problems in the kitchen that was a side building, side attached structure. The shingles were leaking and we needed to have some support. And the county came to our aid at that time and helped us with some of the upgrades and renovations in the kitchen. Interesting thing is, we're trying to retain our historical perspective. So it's still, we have these quite attractive, probably the nicest looking outhouses that are just outside because we don't have running water in the building. That's an economic choice and a functioning choice. The floor, as you come in, is the original floor. Again, to try and retain some of its history. And that's why the walls are decorated with the pictures. But our dilemma now is, the tables are heavy and old, the chairs are very old, and the convenience of being able to store them and be handled by really our senior group has become very, very difficult. And so we wanted to approach the county about helping make our 100th anniversary much more comfortable for those that are going to be attending and to help us. And more particularly, the picture that you see there was from the potluck just this last month. We have them at the end of, the last Saturday of each month. And so we have children, like toddlers, coming to our events because some of the kids have moved back. Some of them have moved into the community. And so we're hoping that this decision is going to help us create a new opportunity for our future and not just restoring our past. So that's why our goal is to put in some new equipment that's going to last us, be a little bit more comfortable for those that are coming. And if you do come for our celebration, November 2nd, the first Saturday of November is our 100th anniversary celebration. You'll be getting official correspondence about that event as coming to help us celebrate as well. So we would like to have all of that stuff in place prior to that event. And so that's why we've requested the funds that we have for us to be able to retain our past and build a future for Hesketh.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Mr. Cooper, are there any questions from council? Councilor Cunningham.
More of just a comment. I just want to say thank you so much for the pictures. I think it's amazing that you've got the historical pictures there. So much of our history is, seems to be disappearing. And so when I look at those pictures, to me, they tell a story. So I just really want to say thank you for sharing those pictures and for maintaining that history of your hall. That's really important.
Thanks very much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilor Cunningham. Any other questions from council or comments? Councilor Penna, please.
Just a comment. It is a pleasure driving through the little hamlet. It's very well maintained and I thank you for that, the community centers, because we do have some community centers within the county that we help out that aren't kept up like you guys are doing with the one in town.
Thanks very much.
And nothing to do with your application here necessarily. I had the chance to watch The Order on Prime.
Yes.
And not necessarily a family movie, but a very well-done movie. And so I was wondering, and maybe it's a little bit to do with this, were you able to approach them for financial assistance, the filming company?
We didn't approach them specifically, more so because they, well, we never thought to go back to them and say, because we weren't really sort of well into the process. And so they rented the community hall for the few seconds of time. And as most of you know with filming, they were there in town pretty much the whole day to get just those fragments. Having the swastika on the building was an interesting visual as well. And so there were some ongoing issues in terms of its use and its restoration. So we, we, some of the town folks on the committee had to work very hard to get them to actually clean off the surface. Like, so they didn't want it shiny, they wanted it dull, and so it took us a while. So I think the relationship there was, there may have been other options for us to consider. We hadn't, more so because we thought it was a chance for us to come to the county. Does that help?
Yep.
Thanks for the question.
Deputy Eve McGee.
I've had the privilege of being at events at Hesketh Hall even just recently. And what impressed me is, is the generational component to it. You have every age category greatly participating in your activities and in the festivities and clearly being excited and happy to be there as well. I remember bringing my kids to some of my community center things and it was because they were drugged there, not because they had the joy on their face like the kids I saw there. So I just wanted to commend you on anything I've ever experienced in your community is because everyone is working really hard to make a really strong, great ethical community. And I just really appreciate what that represents for you, but also for our county, because it's a great model.
Thanks very much.
All right. Any other questions or comment? Councilor Cunningham.
So what's the capacity of the hall?
If we're at tables and chairs, we'll be maxed out somewhere around 80 people. If it was just seated as in a lecture hall format, we would probably be able to get to over 100. But it would be snug in the building. The building's, Dennis, it's about 40, how long is the building? 46 feet? Right now?
It's 46 by 64.
Yeah. Forty-six by 64. Which probably when it was built, was a pretty substantial center.
I don't see any further questions or comments. So what I'll say is, we will be discussing your requests later today in our meeting when we deal with delegation and presentations. So we will be making a decision later.
Great.
And I do want to say thank you to all of you, actually, for coming and being here today. It adds value to the requests that you're making for you to be here in the room. So that's very much appreciated. And so thanks for being here. And like I say, we will, we'll be answering your question later today.
Thank you very, very much. Thanks for the time, everybody.
Not a problem.
Thanks for the work that you do.
Yes. See you later. What I would do at this point in time is I would entertain a motion to go back in the closed session. Councilor Whitstock, all in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you.
Third-party business and advice from officials. Third-party business and advice from officials. Third-party business and advice from officials. So we are now back at our regular council meeting agenda. So we are now back at our regular council meeting agenda. So we are now back at our regular council meeting agenda. I'm aware that we do have a delegation coming in 11. I'm aware that we do have a delegation coming in 11. I'm aware that we do have a delegation coming in 11. However, I'm very hopeful that we can deal with 5.1.1, However, I'm very hopeful that we can deal with 5.1.1, However, I'm very hopeful that we can deal with 5.1.1, which is bylaw 1918, which is a road closure which is bylaw 1918, which is a road closure which is bylaw 1918, which is a road closure on developed road allowance east of a portion of northeast 83323 west of 4, on developed road allowance east of a portion of northeast 83323 west of 4, on developed road allowance east of a portion of northeast 83323 west of 4, Plan 4910S Block W. Plan 4910S Block W. Plan 4910S Block W. And welcome, Ms. Keever. And welcome, Ms. Keever. And welcome, Ms. Keever. You're our official first presenter from within staff today. You're our official first presenter from within staff today. You're our official first presenter from within staff today.
Yes. 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 All right, today I have a request for decision regarding bylaw 1916 All right, today I have a request for decision regarding bylaw 1916 All right, today I have a request for decision regarding bylaw 1916 for a road closure of an undeveloped road allowance for a road closure of an undeveloped road allowance for a road closure of an undeveloped road allowance east of portion of northeast of 83323 west of the 4th, east of portion of northeast of 83323 west of the 4th, east of portion of northeast of 83323 west of the 4th, Plan 4910S Block W. Plan 4910S Block W. Plan 4910S Block W. This will be, I'm requesting first reading This will be, I'm requesting first reading and set the public hearing date. This will be, I'm requesting first reading and set the public hearing date. and set the public hearing date. James Friesen has approached the county James Friesen has approached the county James Friesen has approached the county in his desire to purchase the portion of an undeveloped road allowance, in his desire to purchase the portion of an undeveloped road allowance, in his desire to purchase the portion of an undeveloped road allowance, which lies on the east side of his property. which lies on the east side of his property. which lies on the east side of his property. By closing the undeveloped road allowance By closing the undeveloped road allowance By closing the undeveloped road allowance and ultimately purchasing the land, and ultimately purchasing the land, and ultimately purchasing the land, it would allow him to increase the size of his lot it would allow him to increase the size of his lot it would allow him to increase the size of his lot and allow him to develop without having the constraint and allow him to develop without having the constraint and allow him to develop without having the constraint of having a 100-foot setback from the undeveloped road allowance. of having a 100-foot setback from the undeveloped road allowance. of having a 100-foot setback from the undeveloped road allowance. Should council and subsequently the Minister of Transportation Should council and subsequently the Minister of Transportation approve the closure, Should council and subsequently the Minister of Transportation approve the closure, approve the closure, it would be required of the applicant it would be required of the applicant it would be required of the applicant to survey, purchase, to survey, purchase, and consolidate the undeveloped road allowance to survey, purchase, and consolidate the undeveloped road allowance and consolidate the undeveloped road allowance into his one-country residential lot. into his one-country residential lot. into his one-country residential lot. Closure of the undeveloped road allowance Closure of the undeveloped road allowance Closure of the undeveloped road allowance will not interfere with legal access to any other parcels. will not interfere with legal access to any other parcels. will not interfere with legal access to any other parcels. The applicant owns 5.4 acres zone country residential The applicant owns 5.4 acres zone country residential The applicant owns 5.4 acres zone country residential on the east side of the town of Troschu. on the east side of the town of Troschu. on the east side of the town of Troschu. The closure of the avenue of the, sorry, avenue, that's a cut and paste. The closure of the avenue of the, sorry, avenue, that's a cut and paste. The closure of the avenue of the, sorry, avenue, that's a cut and paste. The closure of the undeveloped road allowance The closure of the undeveloped road allowance The closure of the undeveloped road allowance would add an additional 1.3 acres, give or take. would add an additional 1.3 acres, give or take. would add an additional 1.3 acres, give or take. Road closures are governed by the Municipal Government Act, Section 22, Road closures are governed by the Municipal Government Act, Section 22, Road closures are governed by the Municipal Government Act, Section 22, which states that a road must be closed by bylaw which states that a road must be closed by bylaw which states that a road must be closed by bylaw and must be advertised and be approved and must be advertised and be approved and must be advertised and be approved by the Minister of Transportation prior to receiving second reading. by the Minister of Transportation prior to receiving second reading. by the Minister of Transportation prior to receiving second reading. Notices are a requirement of Section 606 of the Municipal Government Act Notices are a requirement of Section 606 of the Municipal Government Act Notices are a requirement of Section 606 of the Municipal Government Act and must be done by an advertised method and must be done by an advertised method and must be done by an advertised method and in accordance with bylaw 1772, our advertising bylaw, and in accordance with bylaw 1772, our advertising bylaw, and in accordance with bylaw 1772, our advertising bylaw, which notes that the Three Hills Capital which notes that the Three Hills Capital and Neheal County website which notes that the Three Hills Capital and Neheal County website and Neheal County website as our official means for notification. as our official means for notification. as our official means for notification. We have continued to notify adjacent landlords and referral agencies We have continued to notify adjacent landlords and referral agencies We have continued to notify adjacent landlords and referral agencies who would be deemed to be considered potentially affected parties by mail. who would be deemed to be considered potentially affected parties by mail. who would be deemed to be considered potentially affected parties by mail. In this instance, though, notices are being forwarded In this instance, though, notices are being forwarded In this instance, though, notices are being forwarded to residences within the town of Troschu, to residences within the town of Troschu, to residences within the town of Troschu, which reside east of the railway. which reside east of the railway. which reside east of the railway. Rural residents within Neheal County, Rural residents within Neheal County, Rural residents within Neheal County, the fall within one mile the fall within one mile will also be notified by mail. the fall within one mile will also be notified by mail. will also be notified by mail. Referral agencies notified include Neheal County internal departments. Referral agencies notified include Neheal County internal departments. Referral agencies notified include Neheal County internal departments. This process is similar to a public hearing This process is similar to a public hearing This process is similar to a public hearing for a land use bylaw amendment. for a land use bylaw amendment. for a land use bylaw amendment. A person who claims to be deemed affected A person who claims to be deemed affected A person who claims to be deemed affected must be given an opportunity to be heard by council, must be given an opportunity to be heard by council, must be given an opportunity to be heard by council, and first reading is also the mechanism and first reading is also the mechanism and first reading is also the mechanism for moving an application into this process. for moving an application into this process. for moving an application into this process.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Keever? Any questions for Ms. Keever? Any questions for Ms. Keever? We've had discussion around this property previous. We've had discussion around this property previous. We've had discussion around this property previous.
Yes. 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 And he has applied once before, and then he withdrew, And he has applied once before, and then he withdrew, And he has applied once before, and then he withdrew, and then now he's still trying to make it his dream property and then now he's still trying to make it his dream property and then now he's still trying to make it his dream property and is choosing to try it once again. and is choosing to try it once again. and is choosing to try it once again.
Okay. 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 Counselor Whitstock. Counselor Whitstock. Counselor Whitstock.
Well, if there is no questions, I would like to move Well, if there is no questions, I would like to move Well, if there is no questions, I would like to move that we give first reading to bylaw 1916 that we give first reading to bylaw 1916 that we give first reading to bylaw 1916 to pursue the road closure of the undeveloped road allowance to pursue the road closure of the undeveloped road allowance to pursue the road closure of the undeveloped road allowance east of Plan 4910S Block W. east of Plan 4910S Block W. east of Plan 4910S Block W.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, thank you for that. Okay, thank you for that. So we have a motion to move first reading of bylaw 1916 So we have a motion to move first reading of bylaw 1916 So we have a motion to move first reading of bylaw 1916 to pursue the road closure of the undeveloped road allowance to pursue the road closure of the undeveloped road allowance to pursue the road closure of the undeveloped road allowance east of Plan 4910S Block W. east of Plan 4910S Block W. east of Plan 4910S Block W. Any further discussion or questions to the motion? Any further discussion or questions to the motion? Any further discussion or questions to the motion? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to ask the question. Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to ask the question. Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor, that's carried unanimously. All those in favor, that's carried unanimously. All those in favor, that's carried unanimously. Then the other thing we need to do is schedule a public hearing. Then the other thing we need to do is schedule a public hearing. Then the other thing we need to do is schedule a public hearing. Counselor Christie. Counselor Christie. Counselor Christie.
I'll make the motion to move that the public hearing I'll make the motion to move that the public hearing I'll make the motion to move that the public hearing be scheduled for May 13, 2025 at 10:00 a.m. be scheduled for May 13, 2025 at 10:00 a.m. be scheduled for May 13, 2025 at 10:00 a.m. as per Section 22 and 230 of the MGA. as per Section 22 and 230 of the MGA. as per Section 22 and 230 of the MGA.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, thank you for that. Okay, thank you for that. So we do have a motion now that we set a public hearing So we do have a motion now that we set a public hearing So we do have a motion now that we set a public hearing for May 13, 2025 at 10:00 a.m. for May 13, 2025 at 10:00 a.m. for May 13, 2025 at 10:00 a.m. as per Section 22 and 230 of the Municipal Government Act. as per Section 22 and 230 of the Municipal Government Act. as per Section 22 and 230 of the Municipal Government Act. Any discussion to that motion? Any discussion to that motion? Any discussion to that motion? Seeing any, I'm going to ask the question. Seeing any, I'm going to ask the question. Seeing any, I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor, and that is carried unanimously. All those in favor, and that is carried unanimously. All those in favor, and that is carried unanimously. And thank you, Ms. Keever. And thank you, Ms. Keever. And thank you, Ms. Keever.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
We are also going to deal with 5.1.2, We are also going to deal with 5.1.2, We are also going to deal with 5.1.2, which is bylaw 1917, to request to again amend bylaw 1808. which is bylaw 1917, to request to again amend bylaw 1808. which is bylaw 1917, to request to again amend bylaw 1808. And welcome, Ms. Hay Morgan. And welcome, Ms. Hay Morgan. And welcome, Ms. Hay Morgan.
Good morning. Good morning. Good morning.
And anytime you are ready. And anytime you are ready. And anytime you are ready.
All right, as stated, this is to amend the land use bylaw All right, as stated, this is to amend the land use bylaw All right, as stated, this is to amend the land use bylaw for bylaw 1917. for bylaw 1917. for bylaw 1917. Paget Holdings Inc. is the current landowner Paget Holdings Inc. is the current landowner Paget Holdings Inc. is the current landowner of the southeast 303423 west of the 4th, of the southeast 303423 west of the 4th, of the southeast 303423 west of the 4th, and they have granted Course Energy Corp. and they have granted Course Energy Corp. and they have granted Course Energy Corp. the authority to apply to increase the total generating capacity the authority to apply to increase the total generating capacity the authority to apply to increase the total generating capacity of the power plant, plant from 4.95 megawatts of the power plant, plant from 4.95 megawatts of the power plant, plant from 4.95 megawatts to 9.5 megawatt power generation plant. to 9.5-megawatt power generation plant. to 9.5-megawatt power generation plant. The additional generated electricity The additional generated electricity The additional generated electricity will be directed to the onsite cryptocurrency mining data center, will be directed to the onsite cryptocurrency mining data center, will be directed to the onsite cryptocurrency mining data center, which will be the subject of the municipal application. which will be the subject of the municipal application. which will be the subject of the municipal application. Course Energy Corp. has received approval from the AUC Course Energy Corp. has received approval from the AUC Course Energy Corp. has received approval from the AUC to increase to the 9.5-megawatt facility. to increase to the 9.5-megawatt facility. to increase to the 9.5-megawatt facility. The proposed site is approximately one mile north of the hamlet of Huxley. The proposed site is approximately one mile north of the hamlet of Huxley. The proposed site is approximately one mile north of the hamlet of Huxley. It is accessed via Highway 21 and Township 344. It is accessed via Highway 21 and Township 344. It is accessed via Highway 21 and Township 344. The applicants will place five generators, The applicants will place five generators, The applicants will place five generators, which will connect to 10 data center containers. which will connect to 10 data center containers. which will connect to 10 data center containers. These containers will be stacked in groups of two. These containers will be stacked in groups of two. These containers will be stacked in groups of two. This lease will be, this lease will be within the existing Course Energy Corp. This lease will be, this lease will be within the existing Course Energy Corp. This lease will be, this lease will be within the existing Course Energy Corp. footprint and the entire workspaces footprint and the entire workspaces footprint and the entire workspaces within the southeast 303423 west of the 4th. within the southeast 303423 west of the 4th. within the southeast 303423 west of the 4th. Notices are a requirement of 6 and 606 Municipal Government Act Notices are a requirement of 6 and 606 Municipal Government Act Notices are a requirement of 6 and 606 Municipal Government Act and must be done by an advertised method and must be done by an advertised method and must be done by an advertised method in accordance with Neheal County bylaw 1772, in accordance with Neheal County bylaw 1772, in accordance with Neheal County bylaw 1772, which notes that the Three Hills Capital which notes that the Three Hills Capital which notes that the Three Hills Capital and the Neheal County website as our official means for notification. and the Neheal County website as our official means for notification. and the Neheal County website as our official means for notification. As part of our process, we continue to mail notifications As part of our process, we continue to mail notifications As part of our process, we continue to mail notifications to adjacent landowners and referral agencies to adjacent landowners and referral agencies to adjacent landowners and referral agencies within one mile of the site, which could be considered potential affected parties. within one mile of the site, which could be considered potential affected parties. within one mile of the site, which could be considered potential affected parties. The internal Neheal County departments are included in the agency referral. The internal Neheal County departments are included in the agency referral. The internal Neheal County departments are included in the agency referral. Residents and landowners within one-mile radius Residents and landowners within one-mile radius Residents and landowners within one-mile radius will receive the referral notice. will receive the referral notice. will receive the referral notice. Any person who claims to be deemed affected Any person who claims to be deemed affected Any person who claims to be deemed affected must be allowed to be heard by council. must be allowed to be heard by council. must be allowed to be heard by council. First reading is also the mechanism for moving an application into the process. First reading is also the mechanism for moving an application into the process. First reading is also the mechanism for moving an application into the process. And then also included in this is the light industrial districts, And then also included in this is the light industrial districts, And then also included in this is the light industrial districts, but you may see the other uses. but you may see the other uses. but you may see the other uses.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, thank you for that. Okay, thank you for that. Are there any questions for Ms. Hay Morgan? Are there any questions for Ms. Hay Morgan? Are there any questions for Ms. Hay Morgan? Counselor Cunningham. Counselor Cunningham. Counselor Cunningham.
So just to confirm, the existing footprint that's there right now, So just to confirm, the existing footprint that's there right now, So just to confirm, the existing footprint that's there right now, it falls under the agriculture? it falls under the agriculture? it falls under the agriculture?
Yeah, oil and gas falls under agriculture, Yeah, oil and gas falls under agriculture, Yeah, oil and gas falls under agriculture, but when they add cryptocurrency or data mining, but when they add cryptocurrency or data mining, but when they add cryptocurrency or data mining, that is where it has been noted that this is a light industrial, that is where it has been noted that this is a light industrial, that is where it has been noted that this is a light industrial, and therefore the redesignation is triggered. and therefore the redesignation is triggered. and therefore the redesignation is triggered.
That and the power generation would probably drop it over. That and the power generation would probably drop it over. That and the power generation would probably drop it over.
Yeah, the power generation, which falls into the cryptocurrency. Yeah, the power generation, which falls into the cryptocurrency. Yeah, the power generation, which falls into the cryptocurrency.
So this is the one on the west side of the highway? So this is the one on the west side of the highway? So this is the one on the west side of the highway? Counselor Christie. Counselor Christie. Counselor Christie.
By redesignating it, does that change the tax base or not? By redesignating it, does that change the tax base or not?
I believe so. I believe so. I will let somebody else answer that question, though. I will let somebody else answer that question, though.
Should. Should. Okay, so we have a request here that we move first reading, Okay, so we have a request here that we move first reading, and we both amend the bylaw and we set a public hearing. and we both amend the bylaw and we set a public hearing. So what's the wish of council? So what's the wish of council? Counselor Whitstock. Counselor Whitstock.
I would move, or I'd move the council I would move, or I'd move the council give first reading to the proposed bylaw 19417 give first reading to the proposed bylaw 19417 for the purpose of amending land use bylaw 1808 for the purpose of amending land use bylaw 1808 by redesignating a portion of southeast 303423 west of 4 by redesignating a portion of southeast 303423 west of 4 from ag district to light industrial district. from ag district to light industrial district.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, thank you for that. So we now have a motion that council move first reading So we now have a motion that council move first reading of proposed bylaw 1917 for the purpose of amending of proposed bylaw 1917 for the purpose of amending the land use bylaw 1808 the land use bylaw 1808 by redesignating a portion of southeast 303423 west of 4 by redesignating a portion of southeast 303423 west of 4 from agriculture district to light industrial district. from agriculture district to light industrial district. Any question, comment, or discussion? Any question, comment, or discussion? Not seeing any, I'm going to ask the question. Not seeing any, I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor, and that is carried unanimously. All those in favor, and that is carried unanimously. And so now we would need to set the public hearing. And so now we would need to set the public hearing. Counselor Penner. Counselor Penner.
I make the motion that council move to schedule the public hearing I make the motion that council move to schedule the public hearing as per Section 216 and 692 of the Municipal Government Act as per Section 216 and 692 of the Municipal Government Act to be held on May 13, 2025 at 11:00 a.m. to be held on May 13, 2025 at 11:00 a.m.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, thank you for that. So in our motion that we move to schedule a public hearing So in our motion that we move to schedule a public hearing as per Sections 216 and 692 of the Municipal Government Act as per Sections 216 and 692 of the Municipal Government Act to be held on May 13, 2025 at 11:00 a.m. to be held on May 13, 2025 at 11:00 a.m. Any discussion? Any discussion? Yes, sir, please, Counselor Whitstock. Yes, sir, please, Counselor Whitstock.
The relevant legislation is 216 and then .4 and 606. The relevant legislation is 216 and then .4 and 606.
Okay, so. Okay, so. So if that's okay with you, Counselor Penner, So if that's okay with you, Counselor Penner, would just amend the motion to read Sections 216.4 and 606, would just amend the motion to read Sections 216.4 and 606, and it's not even a friendly amendment and it's not even a friendly amendment because the motion belongs to council at this point, so. because the motion belongs to council at this point, so.
I think you got it right. I think you got it right. You had it right to begin with. You had it right to begin with.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. So just to be clear, that council is moving to schedule So just to be clear, that council is moving to schedule a public hearing as per Sections 216.4 and 606 a public hearing as per Sections 216.4 and 606 of the Municipal Government Act to be held on May 13, 2025 at 11:00 a.m. of the Municipal Government Act to be held on May 13, 2025 at 11:00 a.m. Any questions, discussion, comment? Any questions, discussion, comment? I don't see any, so I'm going to ask the question. I don't see any, so I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor, and that is carried unanimously. All those in favor, and that is carried unanimously. And thank you, Ms. Hay Morgan. And thank you, Ms. Hay Morgan. Appreciate your patience. Appreciate your patience. We will now be in recess for a total of two minutes We will now be in recess for a total of two minutes as we await a delegation from Travel Drumheller. as we await a delegation from Travel Drumheller. as we await a delegation from Travel Drumheller. Okay, it's eleven oh one. And I'm going to call our meeting back to order. And we are here to have a presentation from Drumheller. Travel Drumheller. So what I'm going to do to begin is I'm going to ask council to introduce themselves and the senior management that's in the room, and then I'll ask you to introduce yourselves as well, and then we'll go from there. So Counselor Cunningham, I'm going to start with you, if you would, please.
Good morning, Laura Lee Michelle Cunningham, Division Five, thanks for coming.
Good morning, yep, still morning. Jerry Woodstock, Division Three, Acne London area. Thank you for coming.
Morning, ladies, Debbie Penna, Division Two.
And I'm Ken King, I represent the northeast portion of Neal County, so Tuxley, Buffalo Dome, north of Troshie.
Hi again, Fay McGee for Division One.
Wade Christie for Division Six, I've got three grandsons that just love the dinosaurs.
Mr. Hogan.
Mike Hogan, Chief Administrative Officer.
Carolyn Vanerkle, Legislative Services Manager.
Kevin Gannon, Director of Community Services. Nice to see you, ladies.
Good morning, Mike Zier, Director of Infrastructure.
Good morning, Trace Cochran, Director of Corporate Services.
Hi, and I'm Julia Fielding, and I'm the Executive Director of Travel Drumheller.
My name is Lana Phillips, I work on behalf of Travel Drumheller on the Destination Development Plan.
Okay, so, welcome, ladies, and whenever you're ready, you can start your presentation.
Great, thank you so much. And so, yeah, as I said, I'm Julia Fielding, I'm from Travel Drumheller. And I'm here today, really, we just wanted to give you an update on things that we've been doing. Lana's here to talk about the Destination Development Plan that we're working on. And I'm here, I'm just going to talk about a few things that we're working on, particularly regionally. So I'll just go through some slides for you. So first up, just a reminder, I put them on these on every presentation that we do, just so that we can remind everybody of what our vision and mission is. And so we want to be an iconic destination. I feel like we're almost, we're getting there, but. And then also the year-round piece is the, is a vital piece of the work that we do. Also to remind everybody, and Lana will has this in her presentation too, but just a reminder, when we talk about Drumheller and region, this is the region that we mean. We did an analysis when we did our development plan, and these are the things that we was determined to be included in our Drumheller region, just to show, give people, because we could get a little overwhelmed if we went too big. So this is a very focused area that we decided to work on. Just this, just to show you the impact of tourism. Tourism is a huge industry in our province. Travel Alberta doing increasingly more information sharing about the spend, so in our region, we're South Alberta for Travel Alberta, and so nine hundred and thirty-nine million in twenty twenty-three. I think we're still working on waiting for twenty twenty-four. And tourism numbers, this is based on a business survey that we did in twenty twenty-two. We were about to release the new figures for this. It'll be at the end of the week, so I'm not going to tell you exactly, but they are all going up, which is very exciting. Particularly the seventy million dollar in sales, it's, the new figure is higher than that. And I, we were just talking to the Economic Development Team. I'd like to talk, because I know that there, you've done a business survey recently, so how we can gather the information from that and work together on building tourism as well. And I know Danny was here a little while ago, just talking about our Training and Development Program. So just a reminder, this is a program trying to build like a structure to, for tourism as a career from high school up. And so we have worked with a local high school in Drumheller. So this program is a pilot, it was just to test and see how things go. We're very excited, we've been given an NRED grant to extend this for another three years. So we're very excited, and that means we'll be able to widen the area that we cover and increase the partnerships. But just as a pilot that we did, so we've currently got pupils from a local high school working out in the community in tourism and hospitality programs. We are building relationships with Olds and Sate at this moment, and we're looking at other possibilities, possibly Red Deer and Medicine Hat we talked about yesterday. And I did come out with Jenna and some people from Olds College, and we did a visit fam tour around Neahill County with people from Olds College in February, and went to some of your businesses, just looking at partnerships with the college students and so forth. And then, of course, we've got the agritourism event in September, the Long Table Dinner, and so that's the development program that we're working on as well. And I know in the past, we've had some issues about the experiencers and the land of Neahill County. And so I just wanted to reiterate that we really have been working hard on that and making sure that in our social media posts, posters, all the, any reports that we do, that we do tag Neahill County and explain where the places are. And these are just a few examples of what we're doing that. We have worked with the team logging, looping in when we have film crews come, and we include Neahill County in that. Sometimes they take it up, and sometimes they don't, but we always open it up with your areas as well. And just to highlight that we have given fifteen thousand dollars to support the Long Timbrel Dinner in September. And so we really are trying to work with you all and support and promote Neahill County out to the world. And just, and we just launched it actually about two weeks ago, the social media post is Canada's Badlands. This is money from Travel Alberta, it was a Travel Alberta initiative, just to help with the regional nature of our area and the things that are happening across the Badlands. And so there's a link there to the website. We have two areas covered under this, we're focusing on Badlands Live, so the cultural aspect of the area, and also Badlands Unearthed. So that's more of the outdoor experience, hiking, and that sort of thing, so Horseshoe Canyon, for example, fits in very nicely with that. On this website and in the social media, so all the information that gets put on the website, we have an agency creating social media from that, and that includes itineraries. The terrible image that is on there, but I couldn't get it to look any nicer, is an itinerary that goes from Brooks all the way up to, up to here, up to Neahill, and it includes places for yoga in Three Hills, the camp in at Horseshoe Canyon, so very much including, I think we've got the lovely coffee shop at Linden, and places like that are all on here. And if any events that are happening in Neahill County, there is a link to put up on there, so you can promote that through this website. We have also, I had to fight a little bit, but I've got some money from more, the money again, from Travel Alberta, so we're going to continue it, and we're going to extend, and we're going to create a third brand, which, for food. So we have Canada's Badlands, and at the minute it has Badlands Live and Unearthed, and then we're going to move to food, which we haven't got a name for yet, but. And I mean, the food brand, I think, is a perfect one for Neahill County. You have some wonderful agricultural and hospitality places, so we will be working with you on that. And that fits beautifully with the Long Table Dinner in September as well. I'm going to hand it over to Alana now.
Yeah, so, oops, sorry. So just as a reminder, so the Destination Development Plan is a community tourism plan for the whole region. So similar to the vision of Travel Drumheller, it is both iconic year-round destination grounded in community. So again, we deal with this regional perspective. The plan itself was created in twenty twenty-three through a series of stakeholders' engagements, and ultimately includes short, medium, and long-term initiatives. So through a steering committee, which actually includes representation from across the region, a number of actions were selected to move forward in twenty twenty-four. The full action list is available on the website, which is a subset of Travel Drumheller, so Destination Drumheller right at the top of the bar. Today, I'm just going to highlight one of the major projects of last year that provides a lot of value to everybody. So this is our summer visitor survey. So what we did with over, collecting data from over eighty different locations, we got over three thousand visitor responses to thirty questions. So really, this provides quite a robust profile of the visitors that we can use to inform decision-making, event planning, marketing, and also, ultimately, it serves as a benchmark where we can measure over time. So it really provides a rich overview. There was questions around how they were making their plan here, where they went when they were there, who they were with, how much money they spent, all that sort of thing. So it was a really rich profile. There's a number of highlights on there, just for reference. Most of those, why they're, were chosen to be there is they're aligned with some of the goals we have. So there's a value in expanding to more overnight visitors from day trippers, so it's helpful for us to know that right now about fifty-five percent of folks are coming for day trips. And we know that regionally, the Royal Trail Museum obviously is an anchor, but how that might change over time. And it was interesting to note, and this was sort of a weighted average, but that fifty-one percent of came for the Royal Trail Museum. But that also means that forty-nine percent of people were driven here by other things. So I think that's really important to acknowledge the richness. And in that question also, Horseshoe Canyon was ranked number five. It only had four percent, it goes very quickly from one to downward the percent, obviously with Royal Trail taking fifty-one percent, but it really does show that regionally, there's a lot of things that are drawing folks here. So it's a tool available to everyone, it is, again, on the website if you'd like to take a closer look, but the intended, it is intended that we use it. And so beyond just actually creating the survey, we did have a workshop in the fall, which I believe some folks from Neahill came to, to sort of say, how do we use this information in our decision-making and events? So that was well attended, turning it from sort of just a piece of research to actually, how do we apply for that? Of course, we continue on our journey of implementation. And again, we have a handful of actions in twenty twenty-five, but I'm just going to speak to the one where really we're focusing on. So this is really focusing our efforts on working on transit in Drumheller. So the multi-year project is a starting point that it would help, hope to inform long-term plans for transit system in Drumheller or potentially regional transit. The need for transit is identified as a long-term initiative in the plan. Just for clarity, there's essentially two main components to this project, both a feasibility study accompanied with a pilot shuttle bus. So the feasibility study looks at all kinds of aspects of a system, such as ridership, service options, routes and costs, whereas the shuttle bus would provide immediate value to the community, transporting both residents and visitors to locations, but it also provides some real world, real world data to incorporate into the feasibility study. So this project is planned to start late summer with the shuttle bus hopefully running summer twenty twenty-six. As you can appreciate, having transit as a transportation option has impacts on our economic growth, access to labor force, and more housing. This project is going to be possible through a number of grants, and we greatly appreciate, a few weeks ago, you guys providing the letter of support for our most recent grant application. Thank you for doing that. As this project progresses, we will continue, obviously, to engage with Neahill folks and the community as part of the project and report those results outwards. So it's just one step, it's a starting point for transit, and we will start locally in Drumheller, but ultimately, we have to start somewhere before we can look and expand regionally. But it's great to see some progress on this aspect. And that's what we have to say for now, so certainly we'll leave it to you. Julia, anything you want to close out with?
No, I mean, really, the purpose of coming today is just to show you that we, you know, we've been here a couple of times, and we have heard what you've saying, and so we are definitely learning, and that we really want to work with you as a county. We're all in this together, and visitors don't know about lines on our map, and just how can we just promote the whole area and get people enjoying where we all live? So that's why we're here.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that, Julia and Lana, right? Are there questions from council, comments? Counselor Penner, please.
Just a comment, thank you, thank you, thank you for tagging Neahill County.
You're welcome.
I understand some films don't like it, but I mean, you're emphasizing that we would like to see it, but thank you so much.
You're welcome, and absolutely, and if you see one that we've missed, because we're human, do let us know, but we do try very hard. And I know that sometimes people go and do blogs, and they don't put the right thing, and often we do follow up with people to let them know, so thank you for that, for saying that. Oh my goodness, I've just bored you to death or something? I don't know.
I don't know if you bored us, but you probably answered all our questions.
Oh, good.
Deputy Ree McGee.
Yeah, I, that's exactly it, I think we are getting a greater and greater understanding of what all of this could mean for our region, which includes Neahill County, and we love, we love being part of it. So thank you for showing us your learning, and also where you're dreaming of going and where there could be a role for us. I think this is a very valuable piece of information, so though we don't have a lot to say, it is really actually very appreciated that it's here, we really appreciate the information.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Okay, yes, Counselor Penner, sure.
Just a question, you said Horseshoe Canyon, I believe, was number five on the survey. I fully understand it's a big drop there from the museum, whatever. Can you tell me where did the largest dinosaur sit on that survey?
Yeah, so I would encourage you to read the visitor's summary as a whole, rather than only looking at a single question to answer that question. The world's largest dinosaur was just above you guys with eight percent, although if you are actually curious, like I say, there is a question specific to the world's largest dinosaur, number twenty-one, that speaks to how many people actually consider it the draw to the region.
Yes, there has.
All of a sudden, welcome everybody in the community, right?
Right.
They're paying attention now.
Yep, yep, I know. Well, thank you so much, and I have no doubt we will be back. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say on behalf of council, thank you for being here today. We do appreciate having these kind of updates and having access to the survey and the data that came out of that, that's very good. And so we appreciate the work that's being done and the cooperation that we're seeing, and so that's very much appreciated from us, so.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you, and hopefully, if the rest of your day goes well. All right, does anybody need a break? Are we prepared to go on? I know I only gave you two minutes, which some of you took liberties on. Okay, so we are going to go on then to the next item in our agenda, which is five point four point one. And since Travel Drumheller has just been here in the room, Travel Drumheller Annual General Meeting. So I'm going to assume, since you have come to the microphone, that's you, Ms. Kestner.
That's me.
Welcome.
Thank you, good morning.
Anytime you're ready, good morning.
All right. So Travel Drumheller is holding their annual general meeting on April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. This meeting is an opportunity to get an exclusive look at Travel Drumheller's achievements in twenty-four and plans for twenty twenty twenty-five. Just as they were in here, they kind of alluded to all of that. So this event is a pivotal opportunity to connect with tourism operators, political entities, and community stakeholders. Our continued partnership is crucial for the future growth and success of our local tourism and economy, including enhanced tourism promotion, which means collaborative efforts significantly boosts the visibility of Neahill County and the Badlands region as a prime tourist destination, attracting more visitors and increasing revenue for local businesses. Also, economic growth, increased tourism leads to higher spending in our community, supporting local enterprises and creating job opportunities. Also, community engagement, active participation in tourism initiatives fosters a sense of community pride and involvement, encouraging residents to contribute to and benefit from tourism activities. And as well, strategic planning, collaboration with Travel Drumheller allows us to align our strategies and resources, ensuring that our tourism development plans are effective and sustainable. So Travel Drumheller invites you as council to attend as elected officials and to have your voice heard on behalf of Neahill County. Your presence at the AGM will be invaluable in discussing future collaborations and initiatives that can further enhance the tourism experience in Neahill County, and we believe that together, we can achieve remarkable outcomes for our community. So the event details there are April sixteenth, the time is six to seven thirty, location East Cooley School Museum. So at this meeting, administration and council can learn more on the benefits of the current and future plans of Travel Drumheller and how their programs and services are supporting businesses and growing the tourism sector. Administration is seeking confirmation from council if there is interest in attending, and if so, to advise administration of participation to be booked accordingly. Registration for this event is free to attend, and as always, travel and per diems will be included. So council options here are that council make a motion to appoint members to attend the Travel Drumheller AGM on April sixteenth, also that council make a motion to not attend the AGM, or that council make a motion to accept this as information. So our recommended motion, of course, is that council makes a motion for members to attend the Travel Drumheller AGM on April sixteenth.
Okay, thank you for that, Ms. Kestner. Are there questions from council regarding this request or suggestion? What are your thoughts? Not everybody at once, Counselor Cunningham.
I know for myself, I have a Neahill Housing Meeting that day, so I would be here that evening, so I'm unable to attend, but I'm happy to support someone else or other members if they wish to go.
Counselor Penner.
We just had a, not necessarily the same organization, but here, and we're going to be working together, so I am fully behind if somebody is able to attend.
Right, any other comments or questions related to requests that's here in front of us? Deputy Ree McGee.
So I have a question around, if this is an annual event, how does this possibly align with how we do all our other designations? Because this isn't really a governance group, is that correct? So I tried to compare it to the fact that we have people on Neahill Housing, on Cape, on, and how, how does this fit in that policy or not in that policy? Can you wrap my head around that?
Who wants to tackle that one, Mr. Hogan?
Yes, dear Mr. Chair, I think, to Deputy Ree McGee, the, the answer is, this is again, one of those, while this meeting occurs every year, it is one of those one-offs. And while you're, I think you're right in that it's not a pure governance type of entity. If council does want to have some involvement in it, then council could always consider adding it as one of those automatic approvals to, to that policy. Right now, it's not in there, so it does require this, this council, does require a council resolution to, to attend. If it was something that council felt they wanted to be involved in continually, then it would be a good candidate to potentially add in there.
I guess my thought is, is that we have staff members who are working with Travel Drumheller on a regular basis to develop a coordinated approach for that region. And as we just heard in their presentation, they have made great steps forward in terms of recognizing and branding Neahill County on our locations and our photography, and so certainly, we need to acknowledge that. So I guess the question is, do we want to give permission to someone to attend? And if so, who might that be? So what's the discussion? Everybody's so quiet today.
I think it's great to have someone attend. I just wanted to understand the dynamic of which we're doing that for, so, and I'm available.
of which we're doing that for. So, and I'm available, if you're interested, to have myself. I do think the first choice should always be the Reeve, unless different, because, you know, you are the spokesperson, and I think this, under the context of what we've just talked about, you are the most appropriate person to be there.
Well, I guess, you know, looking at it, I think, to me, there's an opportunity here just to facilitate furthering the relationship that we have with Travel Drumheller, and to acknowledge that we see that as being important for us as a council. And so, I actually am available that day, surprisingly. That evening, I guess, I better say. And so, I would be willing to go on behalf of council, and I'd be more than happy if somebody else was to come along as well with me. But, so, we just would need a motion that would say we give permission to attend the Travel Drumheller General Meeting, and then designate who's going, so.
I just.
Counselor Penner.
I don't feel that we need to sit on this board. I think administration does well representing us at these meetings and whatever. And like Mr. Hogan said, this is a one-off. And I think it's very important, because we're trying to build that partnership and trying to really get through that, anything that happens in Neale County, we want to be identified, have it identified that it happened in Neale County. And so, I'm all in favor of approving, I'll make the motion, that we approve the attendance of the Reeve. And I am fine with the Deputy Reeve attending as well, being your capacity with Cape and a few of those other organizations, if you're able to attend the Travel Drumheller Annual Meeting on April 16.
Okay, so, thank you for that motion, Counselor Penner. So, the motion is that council approved the attendance of the Reeve and Deputy Reeve to attend the Travel Drumheller Annual General Meeting on April 16, 2025. Is there any discussion to that motion? Counselor Penner, or Counselor Cunningham, sorry.
It's okay. I'm called worse.
I need a break, maybe.
No, it's all good. No, and I'm happy with the motion. I just noticed in the RFD, it says council member. So, to me, like I mentioned, I'm not able to attend, but I would be open to other council members attending too, if there was any interest as well. So, just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, we do have a motion that specifies at this point. If it wanted to be broadened, that would be up to council, but I haven't heard from a bunch of people desiring to be there. I'm busy. I'm ahead of deadline to that day, so. So, at this point, it looks to me like available members are myself and the Deputy Reeve. And so, if council's okay, we'll leave the motion to Reeve, approve the attendance of the Reeve and Deputy Reeve. Counselor Penner.
I am able to attend, but I feel that you, the both of you, will represent us very well, and you will bring back to us the discussion anyhow. So, you know, I think, I'm very happy with what my motion is in front of me.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So, the motion is that council approved the attendance of the Reeve and Deputy Reeve to attend the Travel Drumheller Annual General Meeting on April 16, 2025. Seeing no further discussion, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. So, thank you, Ms. Custer, for bringing this item this morning, and maybe you'll be there? So, we're going to leave the rest of the detail for you guys to look after. Thank you. All right, does anybody need a break? We're good to go on? All right, so the next item on our agenda is 6.1, which is assessment taxes and rate payer impacts. And welcome, Ms. Von Merbach. It's a pleasure to have you back.
Thank you. Good morning, council.
Hopefully, we're as happy at the end as we are at the beginning, right?
We'll find out.
Yes. Welcome here, and whenever you're ready.
Awesome. Thank you. So, today, I'm here to bring counsel a report regarding assessment and how that has impacted our taxes, how it impacts ratepayers, and then also how that impacts our budget that was passed in December. So, during the 2025 budget process, council directed administration to budget for a total property tax revenue of $27,710,295. In addition, to limit the impact of taxation increases on ratepayers, council also directed administration to include a draw from the Revenue Stabilization Reserve of $277,650. The budget is developed before final assessment numbers are distributed. As such, the budgeted ratepayer impacts are estimated during budget deliberations. When assessment numbers are distributed, administration analyzes them to develop the annual mill rates for the tax rate bylaw. Upon review of the fluctuations in assessment, further discussion and direction by council is required to maintain the MGA mandated 5:1 ratio. This report outlines the current situation based on the numbers developed during the budget process, and it outlines two potential scenarios for council consideration, to ensure alignment with council's expectations of ratepayer impacts, and to maintain the 5:1 ratio requirement.
So, just for clarity for those who may be watching us, that 5:1 ratio is the non-residential to residential ratios. And the maximum we're allowed is to have five times non-residential assessment rate or mill rate as compared to our residential.
That is correct.
Five times non-res.
Yes. And we are, as of last year, at a 4.99 ratio. So, the non-residential rate is almost five times higher than the residential rate.
We're skating right along the line.
Yes, and we have been for the last few years. And so, part of that, the last few years, we kind of anticipated some of that pressure was related to the oil and gas tax holiday, and we really expected when that holiday ended, that we would kind of gain that extra assessment back, and we would gain some wiggle room there. However, what we didn't anticipate is that the year that the tax holiday ended, our residential assessment would actually grow by a bigger amount than our non-res, even with all that extra assessment coming online. So, residential assessment grew by 14% from the 2024 tax year to the 2025 tax year. And I'm speak tax year, it's actually the 2023 assessment numbers and 2024 assessment numbers. That's just how it, but I'll speak to the tax year, because it's a little bit easier to talk to. And non-residential assessment only increased by 11.9%. So, the buffer that we kind of anticipated that we would have during the budget process, and even at that time, we were really conservative with the buffer we thought we were going to have, still was not there. Like, we didn't have that leeway that we thought we had. So, if we were to pass the tax rate bylaw as we discussed during the budget process, that we would push our ratio up to 5.3:1, which is obviously above that allowable amount, and something that now council needs to provide some further direction in order for us to go forward with the tax rate bylaw. So, with that in mind, administration has developed two different kind of base scenarios that amend what we did during budget in terms of giving an option to kind of get us back within the 5:1 ratio. The first one is maintain the same amount of taxation ratio or revenue that was budgeted for, but reallocate $120,000 worth of revenue from non-residential into residential. And so, what that will do, will bring our ratio down to 4.98:1. And in the report itself, I've actually got a table of how that impacts various ratepayers. So, even with that reallocation, we would still be dropping the residential tax, the mill rate, by 3.4%. So, even if a resident has a significant assessment increase, the mill rate itself will have been decreased through council resolution. Farmland maintains at that extra additional 5%. Again, that's because farmland assessment basically doesn't change any given year. It typically goes down a little bit, and usually, that's because something's been subdivided and reallocated into a different tax class. Non-residential, the mill rate would go down by 3.5% to get that alignment to that 4.98 ratio. This has an impact on the average acreage owner of a $99 increase in municipal taxes of $36 for the average hamlet home, $23 for the average quarter section of farmland, and actually, a decrease of $24 for the average non-residential property. So, that's scenario one, which would have no amendments to the budget, would just reallocate and increase, a slight proportion increase, levy a little bit more on residential in order to maintain that 5:1 ratio. The ratepayer impacts are fairly in line with what was approved during budget for those types of ratepayers for the residential type. And then, so to further that, the other option council has is if council's aiming to try and decrease that 5:1 ratio, council could opt to also pull a reserve draw out and further decrease the amount of non-residential taxation that we're looking to levy this year. So, scenario two, again, takes that $120,000 and moves it over to residential, but in addition, pulls $300,000 additional out of reserves to bring that ratio down to 4.92:1. And so, again, the mill rate for residential would still go down by that 3.4%. The mill rate for non-residential would actually go down by 4.8%. And then, the impacts of the residential ratepayers wouldn't change, the impacts on the farmland wouldn't change, but the impact for non-residential ratepayers would be a further decrease in the amount of taxes that they would be paying per $100,000 of assessment as of last year. So, these numbers are all based on, I've done adjustments to assessment based on what we anticipate those assessment fluctuations to be on average throughout the county. Obviously, some ratepayers, it's a little bit different, depending on how their assessment fluctuated, but this is kind of the general picture of what it would look like and how it would impact residents and ratepayers in general. Further to that, I've included some context on requisitions that are going to also impact ratepayers on their bills this year. So, both the school requisition and the Neale Housing requisition have significantly increased this year. Council will recall, the Neale Housing one actually increased last year, but council opted to fund some of that out of reserves in order to mitigate that bottom line impact on ratepayers. However, the province had a little bit of pushback on that methodology of pulling some requisition requirements out of reserves, rather than levying it actually through the ratepayers it's designed to come from. So, that is not an option this year. So, the impact on the average acreage from the Alberta School Fund requisition is estimated at $159. The Neale Housing is an additional $39. Hamlet Home is 62 and 16. Farm Quarter Section is about $3 for each requisition. And non-residential actually sees a decrease in the school fund, but an increase of $9 related to the Neale Housing. So, I've included those amounts just as context for council as we're having these discussions. Administration really recognizes that regardless of the direction of council in terms of how to balance the tax rates to align with budget and the 5:1 ratio, that there's going to be significant impacts to ratepayers, specifically residents on their property tax notices. And so, administration anticipates drafting additional communication, likely revamping the tax rate insert a little bit, to be a little less about budget and a little more focused on the actual impact of the requisition component and the efforts that council has done to try and mitigate the municipal component, which is the only component that council actually has control over on that bill.
Well, thank you for that. See, I'm trying to keep it positive. So, really, not super good news for anyone in any way, shape, or form, unfortunately. But I do appreciate the fact that you have provided us with perhaps some options. But before we get into lengthy comment from me, I want to give council a opportunity to weigh in. So, council, what are your thoughts based on what you have heard presented to this point? I'd be very interested in hearing what you have to say. Counselor Christie. I obviously don't pay enough attention to my tax notice, but is the school requisition itemized tax line on our tax notice?
Through the chair, yes.
Okay. Can it be highlighted to point out that it wasn't us?
Through the chair, that our anticipation is to actually highlight that in that tax insert that goes alongside the assessment notices and the tax notices when they go out. The tax insert has the last few years really been focused on budget and some of the major initiatives included in budget, and it will still include those components, but we kind of anticipate making kind of the front top part a little bit more about where the increase is coming from and how much is not within council's control, because the vast majority is not. Two-thirds of that increase for the average residential ratepayer has, is not within the control of council.
And the police requisition will be highlighted too, is that right?
Through the chair, I don't believe we are allowed to do that.
It could be, couldn't it? Should be, but.
That can be on the insert, though, right?
Yeah. Yes, absolutely.
Any other questions? So, doing a little quick math, you're telling me I'd be paying additional 470-some dollars in Neale Housing, education, and municipal taxes this year?
Through the chair, it depends on exactly what your assessment is, but.
Well, I'm working right off my exact assessment.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. So, if we're looking at the average property, that's different, but I like to relate it to how it impacts me, especially since I have to explain that to Mrs. King, which is sometimes the hardest taxpayer when it comes to. It's my fault. Thank you very much, Counselor Whitson. So, discussion. Counselor Penner.
Ouch. Is that all I'm going to say? And I was like, Counselor Christie, when I got my package, I went to my tax return and to make sure that the educational is identified and not just blended in. And of course, it was. But yeah, this is ouch. And like you said, two-thirds of it is out of our control. But we've got to deal with it.
Well, in some ways, 100% of it's out of our control because of the mandated 5:1 ratio. And I see in some other material that is in today's council package, when we actually get to talking about the tax bylaw, that there's still a portion of last year's education requisition that wasn't taken, that we still have to collect this year as well.
And through the chair.
But that's calculated in all of this already.
Yes, and that is common, where the requisition will be a little bit over or under in any given year, and then we catch that up in the future year. That is just something that happens based on how the province calculates equalized assessment, how assessment actually comes in. It's never going to be perfect math on that, but yes, that is also there.
Has it ever been an over requisition, or they give us a credit back?
I'd have to look historically. It has happened on the Troschu one, but I haven't, I don't know if that's happened on the school one.
Well, and that's the other one that I'll see on my tax bill, of course, would be the Troschu recreational plebiscited requisition, so. But that's a choice of the people who lived in that area, so. Certainly outside of our purview as well, so. And that is highlighted on the tax notice as well, so. So, I think one of the comments that was made, and I've heard it reinforced by council, certainly, the communication of the changes and why they're occurring, and where the control or lack of control happens to be are very, very important. People probably aren't so much going to want to care about how we got to where we got to as to why they're seeing their tax bill the way it is. And I think it's still important for us to be communicating the fact that within Neale County and within the control that we have of the budget, that we actually are doing a pretty good job of holding a line. And I think I'd really like to see that communicated as well, that we're not frivolously spending money. And as a council and as administration and staff, there's been a concerted effort to hold that line and where possible, to save money. And I think I'd probably fail in my duty if I didn't acknowledge the fact that staff has done a pretty good job of helping us as council to hold some of that, so. So, when you're talking to people, you can say thank you on my behalf. So when you're talking to people, you can say thank you on my behalf, so. All right. Pretty quiet group all of a sudden. So one of the things that I understand clearly from what's been communicated to me out there, and I don't necessarily have to agree with it, but I understand that there's not a huge appetite on the farmland side for us to be generating much revenue there currently. And because of what's happening within the assessment side of things, when you look at that residential largely inflationary increase, um, takes away a lot of flexibility, especially when the non-residential didn't at least keep pace. Would have really helped had that kept pace with the residential. But um, I don't know, would anyone in this room really want to consider um, something beyond what's being suggested? Which is to reallocate some of that money that we might have otherwise collected from non-residential onto the residential side and to buffer the total costs by increasing the amount from revenue stabilization to the three hundred thousand. I still don't like the ratio, four point nine two to one. That's still way too close, but that's maybe the best we can do.
Well, and through the chair, one thing I would highlight is over the last few years, council has really paid, that ratio hasn't dropped because council has really worked to try and mitigate those impacts on residential rate pairs in light of environmental economic situations for everybody across the board. Council's dropped the mill rate multiple years in a row, and the reason the mill rate has dropped is because assessment in residential continues to increase by ten percent or more year over year. And council has done a really good job during those budget processes to mitigate spending, to ma- balance the budget, to work to try and limit that impact on residential rate pairs. Unfortunately, this year is kind of that like perfect storm of requisitions impacting rate pairs and we're us really not getting the leeway we anticipated when that oil and gas tax holiday ended.
Counselor Whitstock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm really leaning towards scenario one. I know that it is, it's really, really close, but with scenario two, taking more out of revenue stabilization, that gives us a little more wiggle room, but on the other hand, with the economic conditions that are happening currently, I don't see an issue with next year's assessment being fourteen point nine percent higher than this year's. But that's my pie in the sky thing, but because of what's happening, I don't, I think we're going to be in deep trouble regardless of, but I'm, I would be in favor of scenario one.
Mr. Hogan, sure.
Deputy, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to reinforce something that Ms. von Merbach has highlighted in her, her presentation and touched on is that when we talk about that residential assessment, I think one of the important things to note there is that that increase is primarily inflationary. And so a house that was worth a hundred thousand last year is worth a hundred and fourteen thousand this year. That's actually not new expanded assessment for the county, and that's what means to keep the taxes the same, the mill rate's got to drop, which is of course what impacts the five to one ratio. This would be a completely different discussion if that residential assessment was increasing because there were a lot of new homes being built in Neohill County. That would actually be a good thing that would help out. And so again, it highlights the importance of some of the county's activities regarding economic development and trying to expand that assessment base so that where the expanded assessment base is good when it's new assessment, bricks and mortar, houses, businesses, that sort of thing. It really works against us um, in these instances because we're close to that ratio when that increase is inflationary. And of that fourteen percent increase in residential, I think it was twelve or thirteen percent was essentially inflationary. And so that's, that's what makes it difficult, but it does reinforce some of the activities that we're undertaking in terms of act dev to try and, and broaden that assessment base.
Okay, council thoughts? None of us like the numbers. But I guess it's not about liking them, I suppose. It's about what the reality is that we're sitting here currently facing, so. Uh, Deputy Reeve McGee.
Thank you for the excellent information and explanations, and I really am strongly looking forward to the communication component. I think the better we can educate um, our residents about how and why this is happening, it, it's just really important. Um, I also agree with that, I almost called Reeve, Counselor Whitstock, boy, got to wear that hat for way longer than you get it. But yeah, I really agree with him and to the point that I'm willing to make a motion unless we need more discussion. Um, the council recommended that the twenty twenty five tax rate bylaw be presented in alignment with season, scenario one, excuse me.
So I just went back to our March twenty fifth meeting when uh, the assessment gentlemen were here and in twenty twenty four, twelve point seven percent of that presidential assessment is inflationary, one point two is new growth. So it's significant, the inflationary portion of that, so. And I, I don't know if I'm as optimistic as Counselor Whitstock is about next year that we won't see inflationary growth on the residential side to that degree. It worries me where we're going, inflation as compared to real growth, which is the argument about development, right? Any further discussion? We do have a motion um, that says we would amend the twenty twenty five operating budget by reducing, um, let me just find it here so I can get it right.
Through the chair, that second motion would only be required if we went through scenario two.
Right, scenario one, right. That twenty twenty five tax rate bylaw be presented in alignment with scenario one. So the dollars that end up.
Through the chair, the scenario one means we still levy the same amount of taxes as was budgeted, just that we're levying a hundred and twenty thousand dollars more from residential and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars less from non-residential to maintain the five to one ratio. So there's no actual amendment to the budget, there's no actual amendment in that way. I included that second one in case council opted to go to scenario two so that we would ensure we also adjusted the budget in alignment with how the tax rate bylaw would be presented. And we do, the tax rate bylaw is coming for first reading after this report, and we did develop it in alignment with scenario one with the anticipation if council opted to go to some version of scenario two, we would then amend it before second and third reading later in April.
Deputy Reeve McGee.
Before we, um, we've, before you bring us to vote, could I request that we have each person who haven't commented yet on what option they'd like to make a comment to be sure that we all understand what we're voting on and where we all are positioned on this, because this is ugly and we need to be able to um, understand it well when we go back out to, to our communities.
Okay, um, certainly uh, be of value to hear the opinions from council. So um, the motion is that we align with um, strategy one, scenario one. Counselor Christie, your thoughts?
Well, my concern overall is that our, our linear tax based on the oilfield activity we have, oil and gas, is it's a depreciating asset whether we like it or not. It, a lot of it is really old. Somehow we have to offset that revenue that it was because it isn't going to be in the future. So if we don't move a little bit all the time, we're going to be really behind. So I agree with this scenario one.
Okay. I'm assuming Deputy Reeve, you feel you've made yourself clear?
I do.
Okay.
I don't like either, but we have to live with one. Um, and for sure, we can't rely on oil and gas forever here, a hundred percent, you know, like as we have in the past, so um, I've got, scenario one is, I'm behind you with scenario one.
Counselor Whitstock, sure, please.
Well, like I stated earlier, I am, I'm really concerned about the way the world is headed in this point in time. You know, if, if I was concerned about inflation, you generally don't get inflation when you're in a recession or a depression, and I think that's the way we're headed, but I'm hoping I'm wrong.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Cunningham.
Not a hundred percent sure, excuse me, the information you're looking for, but I mean, I think I'm pretty open during budget process, my concerns. Um, I've been very open in the business community that I thought twenty twenty five was going to decimate some businesses, which affects families, residents. So I just have felt all along it was going to be a tough year, and I hate to say that that's so far come true. Like was mentioned earlier, we have one control and that's the municipal component, so that's where I'm always going to lean towards. But it is, and I've had conversations with rate pairs already, like we said, the school tax. It's kind of funny, I know that, I think it was the province had something in the mailbox yesterday about, you know, oh, life is great and you know, you're, this is going down. And it's funny, um, I noticed on their website, they said that budget twenty twenty five is a responsible fiscal plan to meet the challenging challenges facing, facing Albertans. So as we've, uh, councils talked a lot, um, and we heard at our mayhem, I mean, I think we just feel we're getting a lot of things downloaded. I didn't really know that word a lot till four years ago, so um, there's a lot of challenges out there as, as Counselor Whitstock mentioned, so don't like it, but I guess we don't really have a choice at this point, but I do think we have to keep advocating with our provincial government as well.
Which scenario do you like best?
Neither. But yeah, I'm, I'm, if I have to choose, I'm choo- I'm going to go with the one that's on the table.
So I guess my biggest concern with scenario one is just where that ratio ends up. And um, the reason I have that concern, if we're sitting at four point nine eight to one, and next year our residential assessment comes in even without a lot of inflationary impact in it, if, if it's the same as this year, it's just a one point two percent increase in new growth and the non-res assessment declines, that leaves us exactly where we're sitting right now, which is in a very, very hard place. So I'm a little uncomfortable leaving it at the four point nine eight. And um, for that reason, I'm likely to vote against scenario one, but um, I really think we need to give ourselves more wiggle room there, but I recognize it's not a fun place for any of us. And so um, it is concerning to me that we sit at four point nine eight to one. That's, that is a huge concern to me. I'd like to think that we're not going to see a lot of inflationary growth on the residential side next year, but I sure wouldn't bet against it necessarily. And I am anticipating we may see lower non-res numbers next year too, and that puts us right back up against this wall next year, so. Anyway, that's my comment, so. Counselor Whitstock?
I think, I understand that's valid.
Yeah.
I mean, I had that concern also, but.
Yeah, okay. Any further discussion, uh, questions or comment related to um, the motion that's in front of us that council recommend the twenty twenty five tax rate bylaw be presented in alignment with scenario one? Any further question, comment, or discussion? Think we've had a pretty out there conversation. Okay, well then, in that case, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? And the motion is carried. So thank you very much, Ms. von Merbach. Very much appreciate the work you do on this and all the people that are in the background there working with you. Certainly, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the fact that council does appreciate the work that comes in front of us, and so thank you. Uh, Counselor Cunningham, absolutely, please.
Sorry, just wanted to ask a question. Um, I didn't have my um, bill from last year, but so I know we got some information on the increase in the school tax. I know for myself as a business owner in an urban, it's twenty percent that it's increased. So will, will the public know what the, what the increase that the province put on? Will they know what that be, or will it just be the dollar figure that comes on their tax bill? If that makes sense.
Uh, Mr. Hogan, if you want to clarify?
Deputy, Mr. Reeve, our intent is that like past years, when you've gotten your, your tax notice, there's an insert that we put in there that has some information. So given that, given how the significance of that education portion, uh, what Ms. von Merbach talked about is we'll be looking at the communication in that. So we don't have that drafted yet, but we very much intend to point out some of those provincial elements.
Okay, and I think we've, we've made it pretty clear that we feel the, excuse me, the communication side of this whole thing is going to be critical. And unfortunately, the reality is, is no matter how well we communicate what's happening, nobody's sitting here at this table or probably sitting within this county are going to like the end result. And that's just a reality. Seven hundred thousand dollars almost in increase uh, within the provincial education requisition, plus the under requisition from last year. Certainly doesn't make it easy. And so, yeah, we have to communicate that and um, you know, twelve and a half percent increase for the residential or total education, so. All right, uh, any further discussion? I think lunch is here, and so if there's no further comment or question in this area, I'm going to say we're in recess. And I guess I'll ask council, how much time do you want? How long a break would you like? Half an hour? Do you want longer? Okay, I'm going to say we're in recess to twelve forty five, so that gives us a little bit longer than a half an hour.
An extra minute, thanks, at ten seconds.
No, that's, that's longer than an extra minute. It's an extra ten minutes. So we're in recess, and again, Ms. von Merbach, thank you. Very much appreciate you being here and presenting today, so thank you. We're in recess. Very much appreciate you being here and presenting today, so thank you. We're in recess.
It is one forty-six, so I'm going to call our meeting back to order. And we are going to move forward in our agenda to six point two, which is tax rate bylaw, bylaw nineteen thirteen. And welcome, Ms. Nyman, and welcome back, Ms. Von Merbach. And at any time you are ready.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, council. Today, I am bringing you the twenty twenty-five tax bylaw nineteen thirteen. So what this is, each council must pass a property tax bylaw annually. And the property tax bylaw authorizes the council to impose a tax in respect of property in the municipality to raise revenue to be used toward the payments of expenditures and transfers set out in the budget of the municipality and the requisitions. We also have a few bylaws that do affect the tax notices, so I've listed them as well. We have a special tax levy bylaw. That is for the Troschu requisition levy, and that's going to come forward separately to council in its bylaw nineteen fourteen. We also have, at current time, we have four local improvement bylaws. And I just thought it was important to mention that Sunny Slope, Kirkpatrick, and Selkirk, this is the last year that that bylaw is going to be in place. And then there is another year for about eight citizens in Sunny Slope. So that's not going to be brought forward to council because there has been no changes to those bylaws. So the Sunny Slope, Kirkpatrick, and Selkirk, you won't see anymore after this year, and there'll just be one more year. And if there's no changes to that one, usually address changes is why it would be brought back, then you won't see that, those ones as well. And so basically, after twenty twenty-six tax year, there will be no local improvement bylaws that will affect anybody's taxes. So just for some background, the property tax bylaw authorizes council to impose a tax on property in the municipality to raise revenues used towards the payment of the expenditures set out in the county's operating budget. So administration will administer and send out the combined assessment tax notices on or before June first. And then the current due date, and so there is, yeah, the current due date and penalty bylaw, which is bylaw eighteen nineteen, states that the taxes are due on or before October thirty-first. So that's where that due date is outlined. And so for discussion, the annual twenty twenty-five budget for Neill County estimated the municipal revenues to be thirty-two million, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-five, with twenty-seven million, seven-hundred-and-ten-thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-five from taxation revenue, and four million, four-hundred-and-seventeen, five-hundred-and-forty from other revenue sources. The total expenditures are thirty-two million, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-five, with nine million, two-hundred-and-eighty thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-eight for future financial plans. And then I have the requisitions that are also on top of that. So in addition to the funds collected for Neill County operations and services, municipalities are required by legislation to collect and remit funds for various requisitions. So the first requisition is the Alberta School Fund. And the Alberta School Fund collects a requisition through municipal taxes to provide Alberta's education system with substantial sources of revenue to facilitate educational programs for schools across the province. The province calculates the revenue based on equalized assessment values. The municipality then divides the requisition amount by the taxable properties listed on the assessment rule to determine the provincial education tax rate for municipalities. The municipality uses this tax rate to levy the provincial education property taxes on all taxable properties. So the Alberta School requisition increased from five million, five-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-six for twenty twenty-four, and that's to six million, two-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-three in twenty twenty-five. There is forty thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-seven, ninety-two left to requisition for twenty twenty-four. That makes the total Alberta School Fund six million, three-hundred-and-nine-thousand, one-hundred-and-nineteen, and seventy-eight cents. And that is just two, two assessment changes throughout the year. And then we're required to requisition that the following year. Then we have a designated and industrial property requisition, and this is only affects designated industrial property. This does not affect anyone other than that. And this requisition is a fee charged by the province to assess linear properties within Neill County, that's wells, pipelines, telecommunications, assets, and et cetera. The county's twenty twenty-five obligations are a hundred and four thousand, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, a hundred and four, thousand, one hundred and twelve, sixty-eight, to be collected from linear and designated industrial owners through a separate tax rate to pay the requisition. So they just are the only ones that see that, and that's the assessment that's done by the province. The other requisition is the Neill Housing. Neill Housing is, so management bodies administer the seniors lodge program under the Alberta Housing Act and have legislated the authority to requisition taxes to assist with the costs of the accommodation services they provide to eligible seniors. The Neill County's twenty twenty-five requisition amount is three hundred and eleven thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-two, and seventeen cents. There was four hundred and eighty-eight, hundred, or four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ten cents left to requisition in the twenty twenty-four year, making the twenty twenty-five total three hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and seventy, twenty-five. So the financial and staffing implications are the approval of this tax rate bylaw ensures that administration can issue tax notices that provide total taxation revenues as shown in the county's operating budget. So council's options are that council receives first reading of bylaw nineteen twelve as presented, that council gives first reading of bylaw nineteen thirteen as amended, or that council requests additional information. We just are presenting the first reading today because you were presented with new information that could impact the budget. So if there was more questions and stuff, we were just going to present first reading today, and we're going to bring this back again for second and third. So we are recommending that you give first reading to bylaw eighteen thirteen for the twenty twenty-five tax rate. And if this is, once all the readings are done, that means we could go ahead and, and prepare and send out the twenty twenty-five tax notices. Does anybody have any questions on the, on that part?
How many questions would you like? Thank you, Ms. Nyman, for that. Are there questions or comments, concern? Sir, Councilor Wester.
So we're going to have to have all three readings done by such and such a time to make sure that we have the appeal period worked out. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, so we-
So it needs to be done by-
We're going to bring everything forward by, on the April twenty-second meeting, so we could have everything approved then, or one more council after to meet the June first. Because we're expecting to have everything in the mail for June first, and that would allow for kind of the same process as last year. June first would be the mailing date. People would be considered that they'd have them in eight days, and then you would have the sixty-day appeal. It would be the, kind of the same, it would fall on August, August eighth.
Yeah, so in other words, don't drag it out until August.
No, yeah, you don't want to do that.
If not, what's the wish of council? Councilor Penner.
I'd make the motion that council gives first reading of bylaw nineteen thirteen as presented.
All right. I don't think any of us are really enthralled with the numbers or happy with them, but they are what's, is there. So we have a motion to give first reading to bylaw nineteen thirteen, that being a bylaw for the twenty twenty-five tax rates. Is there any further questions, comment, discussion to that motion? Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just drawing attention. We're suggesting a slight change to the, to the motion as read. We're just matching it with, with the title of the bylaw. So it doesn't change anything, it just has that alignment. So my apologies, I should have caught that sooner.
Nope, that's fine. So then, the motion is that council give first reading to bylaw nineteen thirteen, the twenty twenty-five tax rate bylaw. Okay, so we're clear. Any further comment, question, or discussion? I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to ask the question, all those in favor. That's carried unanimously. So thank you, Ms. Nyman, and of course, Ms. Von Merbach, appreciate your-
Thank you.
-presentation. Thank you for your help. The next item in our agenda is six point three, which is bylaw nineteen fifteen, the town of Troschu Seniors Living Complex, the new borrowing bylaw for that. And welcome, Ms. Cochrane, and anytime that you are ready.
Good afternoon, council. I'm here to present second and third reading of bylaw nineteen fifteen. On February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, council approved the first reading of bylaw nineteen fifteen, which guarantees a loan to the town of Troschu. Administration advertised the bylaw for public consideration and comment from March twelfth to twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, with no comments received. And today, we're presenting the second and third reading for council's consideration. And would you like me to read the motions, or would you like more information? I'm available for questions.
So, sure, go ahead and read the suggested motions, I guess.
Council options for second reading, to undertake second reading of bylaw nineteen fifteen as directed by council resolution on February eleventh, twenty twenty-five, which mandated the creation of a new bylaw to address the interest rates associated with the Troschu Housing Corporation's loan guarantee agreement. And option number two would be accept for information.
Okay.
Would you like the third motion? Or do you want to vote on that one first?
Basically, this, today.
Yes, please, third and final.
All right. Are there any questions related to the new bylaw, which outlines the maximum allowable interest rate now to be seven percent, as per the request from the town of Troschu, Mayor Kleckie? Any questions or comments related to the request that's in front of us today? I'm not seeing any, so what is the wish of council? Councilor Cunningham?
I'll move that council grants second reading of bylaw nineteen fifteen, being a bylaw providing a loan guarantee to the town of Troschu as presented.
Thank you for that. So we have a motion that council grants second reading to bylaw nineteen fifteen, loan guarantee to the town of Troschu as presented. Any discussion, question, comment? Nope. Okay, all in favor? And that's carried unanimously. So what's the wish of council as relates to third reading? Councilor Christie.
I'd move, I'd move to grant third and final reading to bylaw nineteen fifteen, being the bylaw providing a loan guarantee to the town of Troschu as presented.
Okay, thank you. So we now have a motion that we grant third and final reading to bylaw nineteen fifteen, being a bylaw providing a loan guarantee to the town of Troschu as presented. No discussion, so all in favor? And again, that's carried unanimously, so thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cochrane, for your presentation. Moving on in our agenda to seven point one, Troschu and District Agricultural Society request, and Ms. Vanderkuul.
Thank you, Mr. Eave. Today, I bring you a request from the Troschu and District Agricultural Society. They are seeking sponsorship for the Rope Ride and Race Summer Events. There are six tiers of sponsorship with only five options available, with contributions ranging from two hundred dollars to fifteen hundred dollars. Last year, we sponsored this event in the amount of five hundred dollars. Attached to this RFD is the Ag Society's list of sponsorship opportunities and their Administration recommends sponsoring this event through Neill County's Community Enrichment Support Program. Attached to this RFD is the policy for this program. Council has budgeted six thousand dollars to this program, and we have spent six hundred and fifty dollars so far this year, with a remaining balance of five thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Council has the option today to support the recommended motion of sponsoring five hundred dollars to the Troschu and District Ag Society, or you can sponsor a different amount, or you can receive this request for information. That's all the information I have for this agenda item, and I'm open for any questions.
Okay, thank you for that, Ms. Vanderkuul. Are there any questions related to the request and the suggestion on the part of administration? Okay, I'm not seeing any. What then would be the wish of council? Councilor Penner.
I'm all for it. Hopefully, I read the right one here. The council provide the Troschu, make the motion that the council provide the Troschu and District Ag Society sponsorship in the amount of five hundred dollars to assist in the costs associated with hosting the twenty twenty-five Rope Ride and Race Summer Event, with funds to come from the Community Enrichment Support Program.
Okay, thank you for that. So we have a motion to provide support. Is there any discussion to the motion? Okay, so the motion is that council provide the Troschu and District Agriculture Society sponsorship in the amount of five hundred dollars to assist in the costs associated with hosting the twenty twenty-five Rope Ride and Race Summer Event, with funds to come from the Community Enrichment Support Program. There's no discussion, I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? That is carried unanimously, and thank you, Ms. Vanderkuul. The next item on our agenda is disposition of delegation and public hearing business. And the first item is eight point one, which is the Hesketh Community Rural Hall Capital Grant. And again, Ms. Vanderkuul, this one is yours.
You can't get rid of me.
We don't want to.
Let me get this, bring this up on the screen. There we go. So I bring to you today our first rural community hall capital grant application for the year, from the Hesketh Community Hall Association. Earlier today, we heard from, the, we heard an insightful presentation from Harold Cooper, and we were able to ask questions. I'll do a quick review of the application with you. The applicant meets, meets eligibility, the RFD outlines eligibility checklist. They are requesting seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars from the county, and they are willing to contribute fifteen hundred dollars in cash and one thousand dollars in labor. The total cost of the project is around nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. There is money available for this request. The allocated funding for this grant program is twenty thousand dollars. We've had no other projects apply or be approved in twenty twenty-five. We've had no other projects apply or be approved in 2025 so far. And then I will also go over the recognition options. When creating this policy, council expressed a desire for increased recognition for the county when providing grant funding, and agreed that recognition will be made during grant approval. As outlined in our policy, there are several options available to us. Administration recommends the photo opportunity option as the most suitable form of recognition for this project. And I will now turn it over to council for further discussion.
Okay, thank you for that, Ms. Vanderkuul. Is there any question, comment, or discussion related to the request from the Hesketh Community Hall to provide them with funding to replace chairs and tables, as we heard earlier in the delegation? And Mr. Cooper spoke to us regarding that. Councilor Christie.
Would they be eligible for a matching CFLIP grant on something like this? The R Hall would be, but I don't know the timeline for what they need to do.
I have no idea whether they would be eligible or not. That's. Mr. Hogan.
We would have to, we would have to look into that. I don't have that answer at my fingertips.
I just don't want to miss funding from outside if we can get it.
Councilor Penner.
Well, and sometimes they need this infusion of cash to get the matching grant. Oh, I see what you're saying.
I guess our policy is, is we either say yes or no to the request, and that we don't adopt or change the request that came in, so. The discussion, I guess, for us is not whether or not they can get CFLIP, but it's whether or not we're prepared to offer the funding as they have requested. Any further discussion, motions, comment, questions? Councilor Penner.
Just a comment, and I'm just thinking of some discussions that possibly we, people might approach us and have. It seems like a lot of money for a small hall that maybe doesn't get used as much as some of the others, but they, it's wonderful to see they're celebrating their 100th anniversary here later in the year. And so it's just a comment, I'm not saying yes or no here to that amount, but it doesn't go far, I guess, when you start to buy a few chairs and tables.
Now, if you've ever had to buy tables and chairs, you know that they're not cheap anymore. So I'd be looking for direction from council. Deputy Reed McGee.
I like their recommendation that recognition could be a photo opportunity, but I don't think that's enough. I would like to see maybe that photo be part of their history wall or captured somewhere in their building that you've supported. Because I do think this is a huge bill. To, and I do worry that we do say in our, in our bylaw that this is for sponsorship that doesn't qualify for other grants, scholarships, awards, donations, et cetera. And so I think that's where the CFLIP question is pertinent. But I don't feel like we need to wait to find out if they tried or not. I will just take it as they tried for other things, or this is just the best option for them. So I'm in agreement to the full amount, but I would like to see something posted in their building as well.
So we're requesting that the recognition be not only the photo opportunity, but the display of a sign acknowledging.
Or the photo.
Neehill County's contribution. Okay. And I'm assuming, Ms. Vanderkuul, if we approve this, that that could be communicated back to them?
Yes, of course, I can do that.
Okay. I still would be looking for a motion then to move forward, or direction from council. Councilor Cunningham.
I'll move the council to put the Rural Hall Capital Grant funding in the amount of $7,369 to the Hesketh Community Hall Association to assist in purchasing new tables and chairs for the facility. And I know just, Councilor Woodstock just pulled up some cost of some chairs, and yeah, it is quite shocking, the cost of whatever, what everything is really these days.
Okay, thank you for that, Councilor Cunningham. Appreciate the motion. So the motion is that council approve Rural Hall Capital Grant funding in the amount of $7,369 to the Hesketh Community Hall Association to assist in purchasing new tables and chairs for the facility. Is there any further discussion to that motion? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? And that motion is approved unanimously? And then, do we need the second motion? Or? I guess you might want to make that one, Councilor. So I guess, Mr. Hogan, we'd be looking for direction. Do we actually need that motion? Or can we just convey that that's the expectation and go from there? Or do we want to have a motion to?
Through the chair, either, either works. If, if you want us to, as a men, to just convey that, we can, we can certainly do that.
I think in the bylaw, it states that there's opportunity, and we ask for recognition. And I guess what I'm hearing is that council just wants it conveyed that we do want to have that photo opportunity, and we do want recognition posted in the hall.
And we can certainly do that.
Okay.
And I'm good with it just being a copy of the photo. Doesn't have to be anything great. Doesn't even have to be.
Okay. So what I'm going to assume then is we're just going to move forward, and we're not going to put a motion in place. But it just becomes direction to administration that the opportunity is arranged for a photo, and we communicate that we would like our support acknowledged within the hall. That's sufficient? Okay, thank you. All right. We will then move on to item 8.2, which is Travel Drumheller 2024 Review. And Ms. Kester, welcome back.
Hello again.
Hello again. And anytime you're ready.
Okay. So I'm here again as per Travel Drumheller's presentation that you guys heard earlier. And we just want to say how excited we are for this collaboration and partnership to keep continuing, and how beneficial it is for our, the regional growth of our area. So I won't go through my full RFD, I'll just go on to the council, council options here. So as per Travel Drumheller's presentation, we hope you guys receive it for information. And if you also need administration to bring you back more information, we can certainly do that, but we recommend that you accept it.
Okay, thank you for that. I think we all appreciated them being here earlier today and the presentation that they brought. So basically, all we're looking for would be a motion to receive the Travel Drumheller 2024 Review presentation for information.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
And I don't know if you can answer it. Have you, I, they told us, and I should have asked them, but I didn't think of it until later. They said that they have the funding for long table. Are you part of those, is anyone from our administration part of the discussions of what that's going to look like? Or have heard their plans around it at all? Because I'd love to have an update on that. It doesn't have to be today, but I'd love to hear more about it.
Yeah, through the chair. I'm working directly with the consultant, Danny Page, with Travel Drumheller. And he has sent us a full project plan for what he plans for the long table dinner. And we have a few September dates in mind. And we will be informing council of the whole project very soon. So, yeah. Very exciting, yeah.
Thank you for that. Are there any other questions, I guess, related to the Travel Drumheller presentation earlier today? Okay. Deputy Reed McGee.
I am very thrilled to accept the information as presented by Travel Drumheller.
Okay. Thank you for that. So we do have a motion to receive for information the presentation from Travel Drumheller. And if there's no further discussion to that motion, I'm going to ask the question, all those in favor? And again, carried unanimously. And Jenna, just thank you for the work you're doing in that area, and of course, you and Ms. Cabrant. But we appreciate the fact that you arranged to have Travel Drumheller here today. And just carry back the message that, from council, that keep up the good work yourself and everyone else who's working in that area. So, thank you. The next item on our agenda would be council and committee reports. And we always look forward to this. And the one that we have on the agenda today is Councilor Christie and Community Futures Wild Rose. We're almost going to have to give you a frequent flyer, point card, or something. But it's always good to hear what's happening at Community Futures in Wild Rose. And so, Councilor Christie, if you would, please.
We're conducting an observation request from the county of Neehill, so I'll leave it at that for a moment.
You're not on, by the way.
Oh, if you read your, these executive summaries, the one is the first one. The next one is the, the monthly one that was the meeting the other night. I'm going to leave it there and see if you notice a substantial difference. Heart of the Community group, the winner of the first quarter was Joker Bicycle Company out of Carsland. Part of his strength was the amount that he gives back to the community, where if he gets bikes that customers don't want or don't want repaired, he repairs them and takes them back to the youth in either Strathmore or wherever they need them. And apparently, that's what he does. There was also an honorable mention for the Rockyford Library. They had the most nominations from their community, but they're not a small business, so we had to give them an honorable mention. But it sounds like they've got some really good, good community support programs. One of the things that I'd missed on the Heart of the Community here was that I thought that the nominations ended at the end of April, they actually ended at the end of May. So, and you're more than welcome to nominate as many businesses as you want. So there's, I thought it was one nomination per person, and the deadline was before the quarter, but it goes to the end of May. So the hard question is, I don't have it on the screen. Can you move the screen down just a little bit? Can you move the screen down just a little? Other way. So on the, on, on the business training, the actual number should be 28,000, not 18,000. So part of that is the record-keeping from the first 10 years, wasn't it? They didn't find some of the training that they'd done the 10 years before. But it looks like we had a really busy month training 10,000 people. So if there's any questions, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you for that, Councilor Christie. Any questions related to the Community Futures Wild Rose? So the deadline for nominations for the Heart of the Community campaign is end of May?
End of May, yep.
Okay, and.
For that quarter, for this quarter, now that affects the east side of our county.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion to the Community Futures Wild Rose presentation by Councilor Christie? If not, I would be looking for a motion to accept for information the community, or the council and committee reports.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Christie. So we have a motion to approve, accept the, for information, the council committee reports as presented. All those in favor? That's carried unanimously. The next item on our agenda is item 10, which is the council follow-up action list. And that is in front of you. Are there any questions for administration related to the council follow-up action list? So I guess I would just have one question, and it relates to the septic service in Huxley. Where are we at in developing material to present that to the community?
Thank you, through the chair. So yes, as mentioned in the report here, actually, it isn't quite as updated as it should be. The contract hasn't been awarded to a local provider. We're working through the contract documents right now. I believe that the intent is to begin this service in, in late May or June. So we'll have to make sure we have the education materials out in the next utility bill for that.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that update. Are there any other questions related to the council follow-up action list? If not, I would entertain a motion to receive the follow-up action list. Councilor Cunningham.
I'll move that council receive for information the council follow-up action list as presented.
Thank you, Councilor Cunningham. Okay, so we have a motion to receive for information the council follow-up action list as presented. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. All right. The next items on our agenda are closed session items. So I believe we have FOIP Section 16, which is third-party business. Couple of those, and there's an intergovernmental affairs, which is, of course, I didn't look this up beforehand. Section 21. So I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Deputy Reed McGee. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay, we had a motion to return to open session at 2:11. We recessed to allow the return of the gallery and to go back to live stream. It's now 2:12 and I'll call our meeting back to order. And we've been in closed session to deal with FOIP Section 16, third-party business, and Section 21, intergovernmental relations, and Section 24, advice from officials. So we have one motion coming out from the closed session. And who would like to make that motion? Deputy Reeve McGee?
I'd like to make the motion that be a direct administration to bring forward a discussion regarding exploration of relationship building with indigenous peoples to our next strategic planning session.
Okay, so we have a motion that we direct administration to bring forward a discussion regarding the exploration of relationship building with indigenous peoples to the next strategic planning session. Any discussion of that motion? If not, I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. The next item on our agenda is motion to adjourn, and that's 2:13. We are adjourned. Thank you for your time and patience and attention throughout the day.